Welcome to our regular committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 5, 2025. I will call the meeting to order at 5:52. May I have a mover please? Moved by Councilor Dunstall, seconded by Councilor Martin. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. And we will jump right into the recommendation that a closed meeting of committee of the whole be held for May 5 at five, uh, I guess 5:23 PM at the Wilmot Admin Complex in accordance with section 239 to B, the municipal act, to consider the following CAO recruitment which is section 239 to B, personal matters about an employee identifiable individual including municipal or local board employees. May I have a mover? Moved by Councilor Dunstall, seconded by Councilor Kressman. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. And we will reconvene at approximately 6:00 PM.
Good evening again. I would be looking for a motion to reconvene an open session at 6:00 PM. May I have a mover? Moved by Councilor Martin, second of our councilors to do, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And I will turn it over to Councilor Sedu for our territorial land acknowledgement. [S02] We have gathered in Willmont Township on the traditional territory of the Nutro,
Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Mississauga peoples. We also want to acknowledge the importance of the dish with one spoon covenant, a peace agreement made between the indigenous nations before the Europeans arrived. It characterizes our collective responsibility to each other and Mother Earth. We should take only what we need, leave enough for others, and keep the dish clean. By acknowledging this covenant and the First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples, we are reminded of our important connection to this land where we live, learn, and work together as a community.
Thank you, councillor. We do have multiple additions to the agenda which were circulated to council in advance, so I'd be looking for an adoption to the agenda as amended. May I have a mover please? Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Sedu, all those in favor. That carries unanimously. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest, councillors? Councillor Kressman?
Yes, I'm trying to... [S01] Oh, just your microphone, please. I'm trying to open my agenda here. It disappeared on me while I was carrying it up. So it's the one where we look at cost sharing on the Victoria-Bully, 12.1, thank you, 12.4 in the consent agreement. No, I guess it's not in the consent... [S04] No, 12.4.
Yes, 12.4 on the regular reports?
Yes, and it's the Victoria Street and Bully Street reconstruction, region cost sharing agreement. And again, it's a function of Walder Fady, the firm that my son is CEO at, doing the engineering for that project. [S01] Thank you very much, councillor. There are no presentations this evening,
no delegations, and no correspondence. We do, however, have five items on our consent agenda. Before we move and second them, would anybody like to pull any of the items, councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, Thieu, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to pull two. I'd like to pull 11.3 and 11.4.
You may speak to them.
Thank you. For 11.3, and this is going to acting CAO Kris Kitania. I thought it was a great presentation, by the way, so kudos to your staff. What I did want to mention is that I noticed that I think it was anywhere between 1,700 and 2,200 people are attending three specific events. And in order to generate more revenue, I was just wondering if we'd ever looked at things like souvenirs. We have all these people attending these concerts, you know, a pre-packed lunch that we could sell, or souvenirs of the castle when they take tours, something that perhaps we could look into that would actually generate revenue for the castle. Thank you. look into that would actually generate revenue for the castle. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Salin, to Councilor Dunstall. That's definitely something our staff will be taking into consideration. And just to highlight for council, last year was one of the most successful years ever at the castle, even before the pandemic.
Fantastic. Anybody else want to comment on 11.3? Okay, seeing none, you can continue with 11.4, Councilor.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Actually, Director Mullen, who's just came on, so that's great. So this one's for you. I'm looking at 11.4 for the annual hot mix asphalt program. What I want to know is if we have a vendor scorecard, and if we do, if we could add proximity and impact to the community as a weighted factor. Do we have a vendor scorecard when we're looking at these? I think we do.
Through you, Mayor. I would say, no, we do not have a vendor scorecard in terms of proximity. Typically with these types of contracts, they are bid, and we could receive bids from various different locations, and there is no requirement or evaluation process in terms of proximity to the project. We just look at the base value. And I don't think that we could, without further legal review, look at sort of scorecards that say limit who, or what, or may recommend further for tender values. These are basically just, here's the item, and give us a cost for the item. If we were looking at scorecards, we would have to do an RFP process, and that is not a standard process for construction contracts like this.
Now, here's my concern. There was a vendor on there from Petersburg, and I believe that the pricing was just under 6% less than what we settled for. And when I look at something like that, and I look at a company that is local, that employs local people, that purchases local things, and with closeness of proximity, that helps with accountability, it certainly helps with travel time and that kind of stuff, I just thought perhaps we could look at getting some kind of weighted criteria when we're looking at these, and not just pricing. But I think our constituents for 5% may be willing to say, you know what, it's a local company, it employs my son, or employs my neighbor, they buy stuff at the Home Hardware, they buy stuff here, so it actually helps the community. So I don't know if that's something that we could actually look into. Director Mullen, who's?
Through you, Mayor. So I would suggest this is probably a finance question and a procurement question. And I would think that with RFP processes, these are tender processes, again, I don't think these are things that we can sort of evaluate in terms of the tender itself. We typically have to look at the value that's presented in the tender, and it's just the number that's the base contract number, the bid number that we look at. That's part of contract law about tendering. Again, if we were looking at things like evaluating proximity, evaluating locations, or other elements to bids, then we would have to look at RFP processes, and that's not a process typically we would undertake for a construction-based contract.
Sorry. All right, thank you. I think I will reach out to our CFO to just ask the question as a follow-up. Thank you.
Councilor Kressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor, and this is a follow-up question on that exact item on the agenda. How do we ensure on the quality of the asphalt? I've talked to some individuals who've been involved in various asphalt plants throughout his entire career, and he said the challenge is that people will cheapen their asphalt by putting more recycled asphalt in it. And this gives the poor quality in terms of road construction that we see in some cases. And so I guess my question out of ignorance from my part is, how do we ensure that we are hitting a quality spec? I'm sure there's something in here that I didn't recognize as being the assurance that the quality is the same in all these bids.
Through you, Mayor. So there are standard provisions within our contract that allow for additional testing. The additional testing that we typically undertake for hot mix would be a couple of things. We could do some testing onsite. We also do testing at the asphalt plants as well, and so we have that right to do that through our contract, our base contract terms. We do also have more inspection from staff that we undertake now compared to years previous. So when we look at the quality of work and the quality of product that we get, the more we keep an eye on it and inspect it while it's going in, and the more work we do behind the scenes with the contractor and with the supplier, the better it goes for us, because obviously then we can identify some of these issues, either in the field, or we can identify some of the quality. We hear, you are correct, that is something that does happen, where specific recycled asphalt can be introduced, or more can be introduced into our hot mix placed value there. So that's something that we keep a better eye on with our staff, and we have that inspection and that testing requirement available to us through our contract.
Councilor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. And since we're talking about this report, I just want to, this is more of a comment than a question. I like the idea of using the remaining money to resurface other roads. I thought that was very smart on your part, so thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments on 11.4? Okay, seeing none. So I would look for a mover and a seconder for all consent agenda items. Oh, sorry, Councilor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I wish to pull 11.2 quickly.
Please speak to it.
Thank you. Through the chair, I will direct the question to the Acting CEO. Unfortunately, finance isn't here this evening to answer the question, but I'm curious regarding the memo identifying that some errors were made in some of the rate tables. I'm just curious what the errors were specifically, if we have that information, just so we could sort of identify and look at that switch. And as a follow-up, did anything go out and get billed using the wrong rates?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and the Councilor Wilkinson. I think it was just mainly the error in the fees and charges, but nothing to do with the, like, going out with the rates, nothing incorrect in that regard. But from a detailed perspective, that's something we have to take back with finance and bring back.
Clerk Boss may also have some supplementary information as well.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. In the 2025 final tax levy rates, the error doesn't impact the budget or the amounts approved in the budget. I believe it was the aggregate resource was missed in the calculating of the total. So when they went to do the billing, which is due shortly, they did identify that. And then similar in the sanitary rates, there was an error, and I believe, again, they found that when they were going to do billing. And again, it doesn't impact the budget or what was approved in the budget. They are the rates that were meant to be included. It was just errors in the tables and calculation.
Councilor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I guess back to Clerk Bothermore, acting as yet, nothing went out, like, no bills were issued in error at the wrong rates. Like, we still haven't entered that billing cycle yet. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and Councilor Wilkinson. That is correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on 11.2? Anything else anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? There's only two items left at this rate. Okay, seeing none, I would look for a mover and a seconder for all items. Councilor Dunstall, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto our reports. Our first one is 12.1, and this is a recommendation that committee receives the report, COR-2025-19 fireworks bylaw exemption for 23 Meadow Cliff, Mannheim, for information, and that council approves an exemption to the township of Willmont fireworks bylaw for 2023-17 for the municipal address known as 23 Meadow Cliff Place, Mannheim for Saturday, June 28, 2025, from 9:00 PM until 9:30 PM. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover, please? Moved by Councilor Dunstall, seconded by Councilors Sedu, and I will invite our Supervisor of Municipal Law Enforcement, Erin Merritt, to introduce this report.
Thank you. Through the mayor. Council before you is a request for an exemption to the township fireworks bylaw. This exemption is to celebrate a birthday on June 28, which is two days before Canada Day, a day that fireworks are allowed in the township. Here at the township, we don't have many of these requests. This is only the second one since I've been with the township. So we don't have a formal process in place like we do, say, for a noise bylaw request. So when we received this request, we asked the applicant to go through the same noise bylaw request. So in that, they had to let their neighbors know what was going on. So a little over 200 residents were actually informed of this application. We received four responses. Three are in the report, and one just echoes the sentiments of the two respondents. And just as an FYI, next month, I'll be bringing another report regarding the fireworks bylaw that will hopefully clean this up, so we don't have requests like this or a different process involved. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. And if you have any questions regarding this exemption application, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor. I saw that 200 notices were sent out, but in reading the respondent, at least one of the respondent, they didn't seem to identify in the notices where this was going to occur. Did I read that properly, or I believe-
One of them said that.
One of the respondents said that was, I would think, part and parcel of informing your neighbors is saying where the celebration would be occurring. So I found that a little unusual in terms of if that, in fact, was the case. So that would be my only comment.
Thank you, Councilor Kressman. Through the mayor, that is correct. The address wasn't on the letter that was sent out. So the responses I did receive, I did let them know the address it was going to, and that only people within a 250-meter radius were to be notified. These applicants kind of went a little further because fireworks are a little louder when they go off, so they took it upon themselves to notify more people. But in the future, we'll make sure that dates are on there, just so that there isn't that confusion.
Councilor Dunstall?
Thank you through you, Mayor. If we approve this, is there any liability? I mean, as it is right now, it would be outside the scope of typically, it's just, I think, Dewali and July 1, and I think there may be one other one. So if we grant this, and there's some kind of issue with the fireworks that does some kind of damage, would we be held responsible? Do you know?
That is a wonderful question. Through the mayor, I'll be honest, I don't know from a liability perspective. I can let you know that when this exemption request came to me, I did touch base with my colleagues at the fire department to see if they had any concerns or that. They didn't at the time. The applicant will, if this is granted, there will be the condition on this, that if there is a burn ban in place, no fireworks would be allowed to be lit off. That's part of our bylaw, and that will be part of the information given to the resident. But any other kind of liability, I'll be honest, I don't know the answer.
Do you think we could check? I know that for July 1, there's all sorts of parameters when they're setting everything up. It has to be so far away from things and that kind of stuff. And so I'm assuming this is going to be near a whole lot of other homes. So I was just, perhaps we could check on that, just to make sure. Thank you.
I will just anecdotally fill in, and I know that Erin and her department will confirm. But in terms of the current fireworks bylaw, we're not personally liable for private fireworks shows. I'm not certain if it's what you're referencing, but if you're more so talking about like the Canada Day fireworks that are a public event with that zoning, that's probably due to their actual insurance that they have. But that is up to the individual, and that's on municipal property, obviously. This is private property. So from that perspective, it should not be a risk to approve this from the corporation's standpoint. Councilor Kressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to Erin. I'm just wondering, you whet our appetite with this idea of what might be, or is going to be coming. Is it the process to ask for an exemption, or is it the conditions of an exemption? Or both?
Thank you. Through the mayor to Councilor Kressman. What will be coming forth in June is a report on recommendations to changes to our fireworks bylaw. Currently, my partners throughout Waterloo region are looking at making updates to their fireworks bylaw. And in consultation with those partners, I'll be bringing forward some ideas, possible changes to our bylaw. I'd like to present that to council, see what thoughts, feelings, wishes are, and then I will be bringing back updates to the fireworks bylaw. So the exemption process, I think, will be part of that, along with many other items.
Thank you.
Councilor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. And I don't know how to phrase this in the best way. I guess I have mixed feelings about it. I like fireworks. In the times that I used to go to Disney, I thought it was great to see the fireworks. I like that we're having fireworks on Canada Day. And then I have the concerns. And in the last number of years, there's been more concerns being raised about fireworks, looking at the effects that it has on animals. The one letter that raised a concern, they mentioned their animal. So I'm not sure which is the best way to vote on this. So on the one hand, I think it's great that we help encourage people to celebrate. On the other hand, I worry about the effects. And if we say yes to this, is that going to mean that we're going to get a lot more requests? And is that really a good direction for us to go? So I don't know if anybody else around the table wants to comment, what you're thinking about that one way or the other, but I have mixed feelings.
I will actually comment on that. I absolutely understand where you're coming from. I think that that might be more so policy that we can set out of the review that Erin's referring to. Right now, I see this as frankly, individuals who want to follow the rules and do things appropriately. And right now, we do have, although not a common process, a type of process that staff have established. So I would, you know, want to, I guess, reward sounds like the wrong word, but I would want to, like, honor the individuals who are choosing to go the appropriate route. But I do think that the questions that you bring up are appropriate more so on a big-scale policy basis, which it sounds like Erin's department's working on. I know City of Kitchener is ahead of us tonight. They have 21 delegations. I think it's going to be a little bit of a boom over there tonight, no pun intended. Yeah, so I think that that's just kind of where my head is at from those comments. But I hear what you're saying for sure. Councilor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair. I sort of echo a little bit of what you're saying, Mayor. Personally, I'm in, I like fireworks. I got some young kids that enjoy fireworks. I know it's not everybody's cup of tea, and it can be a contentious or hot issue, no pun intended. But I think looking at it, yeah, in the spirit of following the rules, I mean, I'm looking at the calendar, and the bylaw usually stipulates you could set it off the day preceding or the day after the date that's indicated. So this is just going out and saying 48 hours in advance, or 36 hours in advance of it actually being legal. We want to follow the rules. And my assumption is, is that they're obviously going to follow the exact rules in terms of distance from homes, and parks, and woodlots. So I think looking at it in the spirit, it's a one-time, I mean, hopefully it doesn't set off a chain reaction. But I mean, I also look around at some of my own neighbors who consistently set off fireworks outside of the three allotted days, right? So I would say kudos to these guys for coming forward and identifying and letting neighbors know. I mean, at this point, I'm in favor of it, but that's just my thought, is that at least they're coming out and saying, yes, we're gonna, we'd like to do this. Can we do this? That's my thought.
Any other questions or comments on this item, Councilors? Okay, seeing none. It has been moved and seconded, so I will call the vote, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto report 12.2, and this is our Arts and Culture Master Plan Draft Recommendations. And the recommendation is that this report be received for information, and that staff be directed to bring a final report and plan back to council for adoption in June of 2025. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by Councilor Dunstall, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson, and I will turn it over to our Director of Community Services, Director Kitania.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. This report provides council with information and update on the Community Services Arts and Culture Master Plan, and then to inform council on the draft recommendations that arose from the key findings that was presented in March. Strategic priorities- Strategic priorities have been developed that will guide the township's support for arts and culture over the next 10 years. Those strategic priorities are key areas of importance in which the township will concentrate attention to address current needs, help Wilmot's cultural ecosystem achieve its full potential, and ensure the benefits of culture are felt by the community. The five strategic priorities are: celebrate our roots while fostering innovation, sustainably grow cultural resources, collaborative community building, foster inclusion, and indigenous recognition and reconciliation. Under each priority are goals. Each goal will have a series of recommended actions, timing for each action, and KPIs associated with the suggested actions. Staff will begin preparations for the completed polished version of the Arts and Culture Master Plan. The community services and steps the consultant will make presentation to council later this spring, responding to any action items arising today with draft recommendations, which are our priorities, goals, and actions. And this will further include stakeholder engagement on draft recommendations and any necessary refinements before a final report to council recommending the adoption of the 2025 Community Services Arts and Culture Master Plan. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments at this point? Councilor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, regarding the draft recommendations, I'm curious, was that a staff-written report or was that through the consultant that had wrote that?
Through you, Mayor Salomon and Councilor Wilkinson. The draft recommendations have been written by the consultant. The report itself was by staff.
Through the chair, keeping in mind, I know that this is looking to come back in June and likely to be presented in draft form at committee of the whole and then approved at council. I'm curious, could you reach out to the consultant and potentially obtain the raw data or the surveys or information that they're using to form some of these recommendations? I just would be interested in seeing maybe in more detail how they drew some of these conclusions.
Through you, Mayor Salomon, to Councilor Wilkinson. We'll get that information as well. We'll, I'll talk to the consultant about, in the interim report, there were some metrics that were in there, but we'll make sure that they're highlighted as well when it comes to the surveying and the public engagement, stakeholder engagement. So that's also part of the polished final report that shows everything from the interim report to the draft recommendations.
Any other questions at this time, councilors? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. Onto report 12.3, and this one frankly is very long, culvert replacement award contract. So I'm not going to read the whole recommendation, but if I could have a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councilor Dunstall, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson. And I will turn it over to our Director of Infrastructure Services, Jeff Mullen Hughes, to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This report summarizes the bid process and award recommendation for culvert replacement works in the 2025 work program. The award recommendation is for the base contract to Steed and Evans for the original scope of work, as well as for the expansion of our budget upset limit to address an emergency replacement need that we became aware of during the bid process. The Brewery Street culvert showed signs of failure at the surface as we were closing our contract. And so when staff identified a sinkhole in the field, we had to do some further investigation to see what level of failure we were experiencing with this particular culvert. This was not a culvert that was on our radar in terms of a higher priority. As the report indicates, it was one that we did a visual inspection on. And with the limitations of visual inspections, obviously, these are things that we can only see at the surface level. And so there were other components of the structure that were failing or in failure, which was identified as noted while we were closing the bid process for the 2025 culvert contract. As such, we are asking for additional funds, marginal additional funds, I should note, to the upset limit, as we did come under budget for the base tender value. And so we are asking for a bit more to expand the upset limit of the capital budget value so that we can include the works for Brewery Street within our program for this year. Happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Thank you very much, Director. Councilor Dunstall?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I have two questions, one of which was the culvert on brewery that was deemed as good in 2023, and we cannot use the further investigation because it's too costly for the smaller ones? Is that, is that correct?
Through you, Mayor. So typically with culverts and the level of service we have with inspections, so we just started our inspection program in '23, and so that was a first round of inspections and just a visual-based inspection. Most of the limitations are that we can't obviously get into the culvert itself within the barrel. We can't obviously enter, and we can just maybe take a flashlight and have a view down if it's available. But sometimes there's water that, you know, would limit the view of some of the components that we would need to assess. And so our level of inspection is superficial only, and so we look at maybe, you know, conditions on the road. We would identify if there's, you know, any significant cracking in the culvert area. We would identify any sinking of infrastructure, if the curbs looked like they were, let's say dipping in that location. Those are the types of things that we would identify through our visual inspection. If we wanted to undertake a more detailed inspection, we could do that. However, we would have to look at contracted services and additional costs. And I'm not entirely sure at this point that's of value, considering how early in the process I guess we are in terms of our inspection model. Like I said, we did a first initial round in '23. We are intending to continue on with visual inspections, and when there are additional inspection needs that require additional resources, we may look to, you know, we may look to other resources to do those on a one-off or a two-off type basis. But to get a full detailed inspection of all the culverts that we would have to review would be quite costly, and I'm not sure it would be effective for us in terms of our workload planning.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, there's a $40,000 contingency plan on a $176,000 original contract. That's like 22.7%. And construction is typically a 10 or 15% contingency. So I'm just wondering why so high?
Through you, Mayor. So contingencies in the course of contract work like this, typically they're itemized. So when we look at itemized contingencies, we would have a set base value for specific itemized work. So for example, if we had to add in some additional, you know, granular material or if we had to add in additional culvert lengths, things like that, those are things that we place within the contingency so that if there are unforeseen things in the field that arise, that we're able to address them. And so those contingency values are sort of based off of that. And when we look at contingencies when we're providing cost estimates, we typically would be in around the 10 to 15% when we're pre-tender. But when we actually get within the tender process, those contingencies are slightly different from, we'll say, an evaluation or a pre-bid process. And so when we look at the tendered value, those are ones that will actually, you know, apply in the field if they were to be used by the, or need to be used by the contractor for any unforeseen circumstances.
And we track all those? That extra 40, we track that?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, councilors? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. Onto report 12.4, and noting, Councilor Kressman does have a conflict on this one. This is for the Victoria Street and Bulleye Street Reconstruction Regional Cost Sharing Agreement. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover, please? Moved by Councilor Martin, seconded by Councilor Dunstall. And I will turn it back over to Director Mullen Hughes to introduce this report.
This one recommends execution of an agreement with the region of Waterloo to recover costs of construction within the Victoria and Bulleye Reconstruction Contract. Council may recall a similar report and recommendation that was presented for the Baden Trunk Sewer Works, wherein we were looking to enter into an agreement with the region to place forest main within our contract area. For Victoria and Bulleye contract, this portion of the contract contains regional water main. And so the regional water main is the item that has to be addressed and will be addressed through this cost sharing agreement. We've already tendered the work. We have a verbal agreement with the region of Waterloo in terms of that we would recover from them. This just formalizes the process and identifies the costs that we would be recovering from them. Happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Any questions or comments, councilors? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. Onto 12.5, and this is the Township of Wilmot Encroachment Bylaw. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councilor Sedu, seconded by Councilor Kressman. And I will again turn it over to Director Mullen Hughes to introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is the first of two draft bylaws that are being presented tonight. This is an introductory report just to outline the public process that we are going to undertake for both presented bylaws. And so that's, so these reports are outlined here and presented to council so that there is an awareness of a public posting period and a commenting period before we will turn to council with a recommendation later in the year. For the encroachment bylaw that's being presented tonight, this item was brought forward as a result of encroachments on the right-of-way that needed to be addressed to facilitate construction projects or to preserve access rights to infrastructure. These are things that we've identified in years past and certainly had challenges with. And without the, we'll say, a proper bylaw in place, it does make it very difficult for us to address them in an expedient manner and a manner that's efficient for us to identify and enforce and follow up with whoever the encroaching party might be. Council may be aware that we do already have an encroachment agreement process and an application process in place. And so that would fold into this, to this bylaw, and they would be obviously working together in terms of, in terms of the application process and review process. So it's not to say that no encroachments will be allowed. It's more so to be in place so that when we have these items in the field where encroachment on the right-of-way has taken place, or we don't have access to infrastructure anymore because of maybe a fence or something of that nature has been installed on the right-of-way, that this would give us the ability to address that through proper means. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if council has any.
Council Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair, I suppose to Director Mullen Hughes, I did note that it was listed that both bylaws would be posted on the township website for comments. I'm curious, what I didn't see was any sort of communications plan attached to this that would say advertise that or sort of get the word out more than just beyond, hey, it's on our website and maybe available for comment. Is there a process in place right now or a plan to get this out to the wider public for comment? Or to at least direct them to the website?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, that is correct. We would be working on a communication plan that would obviously direct commenting parties to the appropriate location to do so. The Engage website is one that we would intend to use. And so that's really where we want to steer people towards. And so that would be the communication plan. That's an internal staff matter that we will certainly work on and outlay with council approval tonight to proceed with both of these bylaws. Yes, we would be working with our communications group to post it, not just to post it on the website, but also, as you say, to communicate that out broadly to the public.
Council Wilkinson?
And through the chair, just as a formality, when the report is returned, it'll, those comments will be summarized and provided to council as well? Very good.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, that's correct.
Councilor Kressman?
Yes. In reading through this, I was wondering how common this occurs? And is it primarily fences? Is it garden sheds? Is it, you know, what is, all of the above? People building things without getting proper permission? Is this what's happening?
Through you, Mayor. So the two cases that we've seen recently, one was actually a fence that was constructed within the right-of-way, and it actually limited our access to a valve, the curb stop. And so the fence had passed the property line and had come across the property. We did work with the homeowner and discussed with the homeowner what would be reasonable or how to, how to address removal or placement of that particular structure. And so we were able to work through that. However, in that case, if we, you know, if we had a homeowner who or resident who was not as willing to work with us, and, you know, we would have had to pursue a different process legally speaking. We did also have another project, a construction project actually on Brewbaker Street where there was a longstanding encroachment and certainly a lower volume road and not one we would typically be involved with in terms of reconstruction. However, with development activity in that area, there was a portion of reconstruction that had to take place and removal of some fencing that was placed. I think it was, we'll call it a decorative fencing. But it was a challenging situation and certainly one that had we had a bylaw like this in place, would have been much easier to, from a staff level, to address. Typically, that is what the case is, though we typically see fences and that sort of thing that are installed in areas that would require this encroachment bylaw to address effectively.
Any additional comments or questions on this item, councilors? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor. That carries unanimously. And onto 12.6, this is similar in that it is also a draft bylaw that will be coming back to council in September, but I will turn it over to Director, sorry, before I do that, I will get a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Kressman, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson. Now I will turn it over to Director Mullen Hughes to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Just similar to the previous report in terms of a draft bylaw that will be presented to the public and open for comment and then returned back to council in the fall. So this is owner of sewers and laterals, as well as to address what sort of material can be deposited into the sanitary sewer. It was an item that was brought forward through the infiltration and inflow work that we've undertaken, and it was an administrative item that was found to be, would be beneficial to our system. So again, that if there were things being deposited into the sewer system, or if there was challenges with connections to sewer laterals, that we would have the ability to address those through the use of this particular bylaw. And so that's what was the reasoning for bringing this forward now. And certainly, again, this is one that will be presented to the public and will be open for comment. We will, again, similar to the encroachment bylaw, work with the communication plan to broadly get it out in the community and return back to council with comments and summary of public process and recommendation in the fall. Happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Thank you, Director. Any questions on this one, councilors? Councilor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor. It was always my understanding that once sewers were installed, it was never an option to keep private septic tanks and filter beds in place. Has that not been the case in Wilmot? I always thought that was the rule of thumb, the rule of law in other municipalities.
Through you, Mayor. So in terms of what this bylaw presents, this is just formalizing what would have to take place. There was something within, there was a previous bylaw that addressed, I guess we'll say sewer use, but this is one that sort of modernizes that aspect in terms of taking those elements offline. I would suggest that typically within a sewer area, that if a sewer is available, that typically there would not be the use of a septic system. And so you'd have to obviously redirect your sewage to the sewer system. However, there are cases where, I guess in the past, in terms of the urban area, we've had this discussion before about, you know, if we're expanding sewer and we're bringing it to a certain location within the urbanized area, that that being available for use, that it would be required to be used as well. So this is an element that's addressed through this draft bylaw.
Any additional questions or comments, councilors? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote, all those in favor. And that also carries unanimously. I do have a few announcements for this evening. Today is May 5th, which is also known as Red Dress Day, and it honors the missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and two-spirited individuals, and raises awareness about the ongoing crisis of violence against Indigenous peoples. I do want to say thank you to both Councilor Martin, as well as the Ecumenical Working Group and other members of staff, as well as the community this morning who came out to our flag lowering ceremony that we had. And thank you as well to the Ecumenical Working Group in Wilmot for providing a red dress that is displayed at the Township Administrative Complex, just by the front windows. Complex, just by the front windows if you're looking when you come in to enter into the castle. May 12th to 18th is National Nursing Week, and we recognize nurses in our community and across the country for their hard work and dedication, and for the incredible impact that they have in shaping healthcare and driving innovation and advocating for their patients. And this past week of April 27th to May 3rd was National Volunteer Week, and just want to say a sincere thank you to all of the volunteers and individuals in our community who contribute their time to make our community a vibrant and welcoming place. We really appreciate all of your hard work. And if you would like opportunities to volunteer, there are lots of them throughout their community. So I encourage you to certainly look those up. Does anybody else have announcements that they would like to make? Counselor Cressman?
Yes, I was going to get details on the fireworks since we were talking of fireworks tonight in New Dundee. I see it on the sign out there. It's May the 18th. So it's Sunday instead of holiday Monday. The change was made in previous years. So at the New Dundee Community Center, and I think there is other activities. I will try to get that in advance of the next time. So unfortunately, I didn't have the complete information for tonight.
Thank you, counselor. We will be sure to mark our calendars because the long weekend is early this year as well. Any other announcements, councilors? Okay, seeing none. Business arising from closed. The recommendation is that council directs the mayor to proceed as directed regarding CAO recruitment. May I have a mover for that? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Cressman. All those in favor. That carries unanimously. And I will call a recommendation to adjourn. May I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Cressman, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor. That carries unanimously. Have a good evening.